Commission meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission and to welcome each and every one of you here to Government Center. We're delighted that you are here with us tonight. We will start our agenda tonight as we do at every meeting with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Our invocation will be given to us by Pastor Daniel Blackshire and two of our GCAPs students will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand as you are able for the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Let us bow ahead in a word of prayer. Dear Most High God, you are all-knowing, all-powerful, and all-wise. You are so far beyond the human intellect until men search for thousands of years trying to grab a hold of the drops of wisdom that come from your lips. Lord God, we stand here as your creation and as human beings trying to hold together the world that you created. God, we pray that you infiltrate our minds with the flow and the wisdom that you govern your divine heaven with, that we may be able to bring your kingdom on earth as it is in heaven. Bless the minds of your men and your women, that they may be able to bring us to a place of peace that you talked about us having. We thank you for your divine love and we thank you for the wisdom and the knowledge that you shared upon the hearts of men that will receive what you have to say. Bless us now, Father, is our prayer. In the name of Jesus the Christ, I pray, amen. Please join us in the saying of the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. Pastor Blackshire is the pastor at Word and Deed Ministry and we appreciate your being here with us tonight to give the invocation. Our pledge of allegiance was led by two of our GCAPs students. GCAPs stands for Georgia Civic Awareness Program for Students. And with us tonight, Nicole Hill. Nicole is a sophomore at Central High School, rising junior, as I understand it. She has maintained the principal's All-A Honor Roll, first through ninth grade, and Nicole believes, quote, "Today's youth are tomorrow's leaders." Getting involved in community and understanding civic duty and responsibility from a young age will help improve our relationship with the government. We cannot just depend on others to do what our responsibility obligates us to do," unquote. Also here with us tonight, William Miles McKay, senior at Westside High School, recently graduated. He has high academics and is a member of the National Society of High School Scholars, along with being active in his school's band and Beta Club. He's 2017 Golden Eagle Award winner in the citizenship category. Miles believes that civic education and the GCAP program will help not only today's youth, but younger youth that are coming up to strive and never give up on what their dreams are. He will be attending Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University, FAMU, in the fall. Congratulations, and thank you both for being here. Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes and the minutes from our pre-commission meeting and regular commission meeting of May the 16th have been distributed. Are there any changes or corrections? If not, can I get a motion to approve those minutes? Motion by second. Motion by Slesinger to second, by Beckel. All in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Now, it is my great privilege and pleasure to announce we have a couple of invited guests with her, with us tonight. And first, let me call Sergeant Markell, Marquel, I'm sorry, Marquel Edwards to join This is a proclamation from the Office of Mayor of the Macon Bibb Commission. It reads as follows. Whereas heroism is defined as courageous action, and a person who performs an act of heroism becomes a hero and is admired for his or her great brave acts. And whereas on May the 19th, 2017, Sergeant Marquel Edwards performed an act of heroism after witnessing a single car accident on I-475 and reacted without delay, calmly and readily assisted a severely wounded driver through the side door glass of the RV that had turned over and caught fire. Whereas upon safely removing the male driver from the vehicle, it was quickly realized that the driver's wife was pinned inside. And again, Sergeant Edwards, with the assistance of another good Samaritan, put himself at risk by breaking the front windshield and pulling the woman free from the flame-engulfed vehicle. And whereas Sergeant Edwards is a member of the 377 Quartermaster Company of the Army Reserve and has exemplified the finest traditions of military service for his heroic actions, now therefore, our Robert A. B. Rickert do hereby proclaim, June the 6th, 2017, the Sergeant Marquel Edwards Day, and Macon Bibb County, and I encourage all citizens to commend him for his acts of heroism. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the Consolidated Government to be affixed this sixth day of June. I have signed this, and it's with great pleasure that I present this proclamation to you, Sergeant Edwards. Thank you, sir. Now, let me call on our distinguished coroner, Leon Jones, to come up and make another presentation.
I always follow the mirror wherever he goes. It gives me honor to present two plaques to two of the finest officers in the Macon Bibb County Sheriff's Department. I say over and over, I've been working with some of the finest men and women in law enforcement for over 40 years. That's telling my age, you know that. Even before the Consolidated Government and Law Enforcement, I had fine officers in the Macon Police Department, fine officers in Bibb County Sheriff's Department. On April this year, they responded to a possible suicide. As Ms. Sutton knows, suicide has affected me personally because I lost a good friend this year. We have had 13 suicides this year in less than five months. When the officer arrived, they was told that a young man was going to take his life, okay? When they went in the backyard, they saw the young man with a rope around his neck standing on a fence. He saw the patrol car and jumped off. They quickly moved into action. Officer Dominique Johnson-Williams and Officer Isaac Mungia, did I pronounce that right? Don't write me a ticket if I got it wrong, okay? Don't forget I'm the coroner now, all right? Dominique Johnson-Williams' husband is a Macon Bibb County Fire Department officer, so both of them are serving Macon and Bibb County with dedication and determination. I've worked with Officer Williams on several cases. She's warm, she's compassionate, and she's professional. Now, she ain't no punk now, okay? She can get aggressive when she have to, okay? Having said that, I want both of them to come up and let Commissioner Shepherd do their honors.
Dominique, we're presenting this to you for your outstanding service in saving the life of a citizen of Macon Bibb County and having served in that same uniform, well, not the same uniform, same badge. It's so proud, I'm so proud to see officers coming up for good things and thus not hearing bad things. And I'm so proud of you two guys. Thank you. Isaac, I'm like him, I'm not going to murder you last night, but thank y'all so much, and we appreciate the service that both of you provide for this community.
Oh, yeah, you do, come on. She left in it, 'cause she kind of mean now. Go ahead, say something.
I just want to say thank you.
You just like my girl, come on.
Just got to say thank you. Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you. That was my second day on the job.
And you stayed with it?
Yes, and she taught me a lot. I was with her for a whole month after that, and really, it was my second day. I don't know what to say, but thank you so much.
That brings us now to next item on our agenda, which are reports from standing committees. First is Operations and Finance, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Beckel. Chairman Beckel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Operations Finance Committee met on May 23rd, 2017, took the following action. The committee approved the following agreements and contracts. A ground lease agreement with Richard Crosby to construct an aircraft hangar at the Macon Downtown Airport for the purpose of storing personal aircraft. Also agreed to a contract with Orkin LLC for Pest Control Services and Macon Bibb County Facilities with fees of said services outlined in Exhibit A using general funds of the Facilities Management Department. Also approved an agreement with Womack Paving, Inc., in the amount of $2,506,811,000 for paving services, including full-depth reclamation, milling, and deep patch overlay on certain street, roads, and alleys in Macon Bibb County, paid from the 27 local maintenance and improvement grants and the 2012 SPOLOX funds. Also approved an agreement with Northeast Concrete in the amount of $71,930 for sidewalk repairs along Third Street and for sidewalk installation along Bishop John L. Cotton Way to be paid from 2017 local maintenance and improvement grant funds and the 2012 SPOLOX funds. Also approved an agreement with WLS Construction, Inc., for street resurfacing and repair to Burn Park in the amount of $66,650,000 to be paid from 2012 SPOLOX funds. Committee also approved a third amendment to the 2018 SPOLOX project timeline and budget as presented by the SPOLOX project manager. In addition, the committee approved ordinance to amend the Macon Bibb County Government Policies Procedure to include Section 8.08 parental family, parental and family leave. Committee also approved the ordinance in the Macon Bibb County Commission amending Section 11.6 and 1130 under Chapter 11 of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances, provided for the automatic adoption of the most recently available flood elevation data provided by FEMA to comply with FEMA's requirement for participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. Committee also authorized the Director of Finance to write off accounts receivable for the Department of Solid Waste for up to $724,000 that is determined and recommended by the Task Commissioner and/or Director of Solid Waste for fees billed to accounts for solid waste collection and disposal for which no water service was being provided. Committee also authorized the acceptance of the State of Georgia Accountability Court's sufficiency grant in the amount of $621 from the Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council that has been awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Mental Health Court. And that concludes the report of Operations and Finance.
Thank you, Chairman Beckel. Next, our Economic and Community Development Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Slesinger. Chairman Slesinger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on May the 23rd, 2017, and it took the following action. The committee approved the reappointment of Sheila Thurman to the Development Authority of Macon Bibb County, Shannon Ficklin and Chris Sheridan to serve as members of the Macon Bibb County Urban Development Authority, and Starr Purdue to the Development Authority of Macon Bibb County. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Slesinger. I understand no report from Public Safety. That takes us then to Facilities and Engineering Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Tillman. Chairman Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Facilities and Engineering Committee met on May 23rd, 2017, and took the following action. The committee authorized the closure of a portion of Spring Street for the purpose of expanding and renovating High Street Park and Lanier Park located on both sides of Spring Street. The committee also held a public hearing on Rosa Park Square of a alcohol ordinance on Wednesday, May 31st. I am pleased to report a possible compromise is being considered that will serve the entire community of Macon Bibb County. This concludes the report of Facilities and Engineering Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Tillman. Next item on our agenda is for members of the public to address us on items that appear on tonight's agenda, so that we hear from you before we vote on those items. We've got a couple of people that are here to talk about agenda items. First is Sarah Hunt, who wants to talk to us about the Urban Development Authority appointments. Sarah Hunt, there you are. Would you come up, you are recognized for five minutes?
Thank you. The reason why I, is that commission is on the agenda, but it's in reference to all of the appointments that's being made to the various authorities. I attend the clergy council in May of 2016. It was recommended at the council that considerations should be made that the members of these various councils should be representative of the population of the community. We have African-Americans, Hispanics, Asians, whites, and we should have representation on those councils with percentage of those groups recommended. If it's 1% Asian here, 1% of those people on that committee should be Asian. If it's 60% African-Americans here, 60% of the seats on that board should be covered by African-Americans. If it's 46% whites, 46% of the seats on that board should be covered. It needs to be representative of the population of our community. We are not being fairly represented on these various boards, and we want reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Appreciate you being here with us tonight and sharing your opinion. Next, Ms. Lynn Snyder wants to talk to us about paid parental leave. Thank you very much. Ms. Snyder, you are recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Lynn Snyder, and I'm a born member of Georgia Women and Those Who Stand With Us, a grassroots group here in middle Georgia dedicated to numerous issues that are important to women. As a group, we were at the forefront of the coalition that worked with the city council members and Warner Robins to pass a similar ordinance. Many of you have heard from me or other members of our group via email or phone in our effort to bring this family-building policy to Bibb County. We want to thank Commissioner Watkins for sponsoring the policy and those committee members who added their names to cosponsorship and the commissioners who have expressed their support. While the Family Medical and Leave Act requires employers to guarantee time off and to guarantee a job upon return after childbirth, most people do not realize that a paycheck is not guaranteed. As a result, women are forced to use unpaid leave time, if they are lucky enough to have it, paid leave time, excuse me, and their paid leave or sick leave for this purpose. This puts a huge financial strain on families if they don't have any paid benefits accrued. It's unusual that any given employee would have six weeks of benefit time or eight weeks or up to 12 weeks saved for this purpose. And with using all their sick or vacation time, this leaves nothing in reserve for any illness or emergency of the family or the child. At any time during the remainder of the year, the employee might be forced to use a more expensive after-hours facility or emergency room for medical care. Having a paid parental leave policy will be a wonderful recruitment tool and make Macon Bibb competitive with other municipalities such as Warner Robins, Centerville, and Fort Valley, which have already passed a similar policy. This board has the opportunity to show support for women who bear the physical and emotional burden of childbirth, for the family unit, and the opportunity to encourage fathers to take an active role in the care of and bond with their newborns. A similar policy was discussed at the Houston County Board of Commissioners this morning during the public comment period. If this policy is adopted today, Macon Bibb will be the first county in Georgia, the trendsetter and leader in setting an example. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. We appreciate you being here. Next, Jessica Walden, I think, wants to talk to us about the same thing, paid parental leave. Ms. Walden, you are recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here tonight just to say thank you on behalf of Georgia women and those who stand with us, on behalf of Bibb County residents, on behalf of working moms like me. As someone who went to Washington in January to march for something just like this, I am just so proud to call this place home tonight. I also want to thank Commissioner Lucas for stopping in the hall that day to talk about this issue, and Commissioner Watkins for taking my phone call that day and allowing me to explain what many don't realize that Lynn just explained. Yes, because of FMLA, we're allowed to leave work and have our children, but often it's unpaid, and it's after we mothers have exhausted our sick leave and vacation time. When I had my son three years ago this month, I took four weeks' leave. It was all the sick leave that I had saved. I was 37 and a half when I finally had my first child, and that is really because I never worked anywhere that offered paid family leave. And even in the best of financial circumstances, I just simply could not afford it. So when I finally did become pregnant, I still did not have a job that offered paid leave, and because I had waited so long to afford a family, which we all know is a myth, I used most of my stocked-up sick leave to recover from my first pregnancy, which was a loss, which can be credited to what statistics would call advanced maternal age. When we talk about income gap among genders, please know that we're not just talking about our current wages. If I had taken unpaid leave, the FMLA that the law offered me, I would have made $18,000 less that year than my male counterpart, who did not have to spend his entire career stocking vacation and sick leave just in case he got pregnant. I want other mothers to have what I wanted so badly. Those paid four weeks will make a huge difference in not just the quality of life and family, but in retaining and attracting grateful talent to Macon Bibb County, people like Officer Johnson-Williams, who I hope it means more of when this passes. So again, thank you for embracing this. This is about as nonpartisan as it comes, and I now challenge all of our employers in Bibb, large and small, who if they don't already have a family paid leave policy in place, that they follow the lead of the county and make Macon Bibb one of the most progressive family-first places to live, play, and work on our Georgia map. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walden. We appreciate that. Next, Dr. Jody Long wants to talk to us about the resolution to close a portion of Spring Street. Dr. Long, thank you very much. You are recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm here in support of the resolution to close a portion of Spring Street, which sits between the two parts of what we call High Street Park and Lanier Park. The churches in the area around Spring Street, this area of Spring Street and High Street, First Baptist Church of Christ, where I serve, First Baptist Church located on New Street, St. Joseph's Catholic Church, St. Joseph's School, Temple Beth Israel, and the High Street Unitarian Church, all are in support of this for safety reasons, but also because it will allow us to expand this park into an area that is more usable for families, that there's not a street cutting through this section of green space. We have received, we've received a grant from the Knight Foundation Downtown Challenge Grant to construct an amphitheater in this space, to make it usable for other community groups, including Navisant Health, who have voiced their support, as well as the Moonhangar Group, which owns H&amp;H Restaurant right around the corner. So we are hoping that the, that by utilizing this space better, we'll provide a space for families and community members in downtown that's usable, that's family-friendly and accessible for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it, Dr. Long. Appreciate you being here. Finally, Dr. Lindsey Holliday wants to talk to us about item F, I believe, the SPOLOX fund money.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm a member of the SPOLOX Oversight Committee, and I want y'all to know that we are, we've, almost half of our members are not there anymore, and we're having a hard time getting people to serve on the SPOLOX Oversight Committee. Also, we're having a hard time getting those that are members to meet every other month like we promised we would do. So we're understaffed, and we're not meeting. This number F is an amendment to the SPOLOX project timeline, and it gives over $100,000 to a contractor who has produced some of the most divisive projects in Bibb County for the past over two decades. I'm not going to mention the name, y'all know who it is, road project manager. That company really needs to be taken out of Bibb County. They don't need any more of our money. I can't imagine why we're giving somebody that's been so divisive to our community and keep giving them money. There are so many groups that can design roads, that work with the community, and make everybody happy. They're all over the place, but for some reason, we're sticking with this group. And it does need to be done that way. So I want y'all to help us fill up the membership, the SPOLOX Oversight Committee, with people who care enough to show up every other month. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday. Appreciate you being here, appreciate your patience, and thank you for your service on the SPOLOX Oversight Committee. Next is our consent agenda, and the consent agenda only has one application for alcoholic beverage license. It has been filed by SJ Food Mart at 3751 Mercer University Drive. The application has got the sheriff's certificate of background investigation that satisfactory, also has the business license fee that has been paid, the ad that ran in the Macon Telegraph, as well as the certificate of zoning compliance, and the measurement form from the county engineer saying that it meets all of the required distance requirements. The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of issuance of that alcohol beverage license as requested, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and that license will be issued as requested. That brings us then to Old Business, and the first item of Old Business, item A, is a ground lease for a new hangar at Macon Downtown Airport, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a ground lease agreement with Richard Crosby in substantially the same form as the attached Exhibit C, to construct an aircraft hangar at the Macon Downtown Airport for the purpose of storing personal aircraft and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item B is for pest control services at all of the government buildings, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Orkin LLC for pest control services at Macon Bibb County
an agreement with Organ LLC for pest control services at Macon-Bibb County facilities, with said agreement to be executed in substantially the same form as Exhibit B attached hereto, with the fees of said services outlined in Exhibit A attached hereto, using general funds of the Macon-Bibb County Facilities Management Department and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next item on our agenda is a resolution for local maintenance and improvement grant, paving, using LMIG funds and SPOLOST funds, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Wellmap Paving, Inc., in the amount of $2,506,811.75 for paving services including full-depth reclamation, milling, and deep patch overlay on certain streets, roads, and alleys in Macon-Bibb County, in substantially the same form as the attached Exhibit A, using 2017 LMIG funds and 2012 SPOLOST funds, and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution for some additional sidewalk repairs, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Northeast Concrete Company Incorporated, in the amount of $71,930 for sidewalk repairs along Third Street and for sidewalk installation along Bishop John L. Cotton Way, in a form approved by the County Attorney's Office, to be paid from 2017 LMIG funds and 2012 SPOLOST funds, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. I apologize. It looks like what was up there on the screen was, again, a repeat of what we just did, rather than the, than the northeast concrete for paving on Third Street. Can we? No, we can't. Well, we'll just, we'll just read, again, the caption is, "Resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Northeast Concrete Company in the amount of $71,930 for sidewalk repairs along Third Street and for sidewalk installation along the Bishop John L. Cotton Way, in a form approved by the County Attorney's Office, to be paid from 2017 LMIG funds." Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to make improvements to Burnt Park at the end of Cherry Street, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with WLS Construction Incorporated for street resurfacing and repair at Burnt Park, in the amount of $66,650 to be paid from the 2012 SPOLOST funds and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an amendment to the 2018 SPOLOST timeline, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the third amendment to the 2018 SPOLOST project timeline and budget as presented by the SPOLOST Project Manager and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to provide for parental and family leave, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to amend the Macon-Bibb County Government policy and procedures to include Section 8.08 parental/family leave and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow Commissioners, and those who are in attendance tonight. It's my privilege to co-sponsor, and I want to express appreciation to Commissioner Watkins for introducing this. And this is past, this is long overdue. It's one of those things that brings us into this present age and addresses concerns and the needs of families now. And so I'm just real pleased that we here in Macon Bibb are embracing this, and look forward to the folks who have come to express support for this. Will continue to come and express your support for other issues. We're going to need you on some other issues, believe me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Till?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I want to also echo Commissioner Lucas's sentiments. I received a call from actually a gentleman first about this particular resolution, and it was actually Mr. Cox, who was called on behalf of Ms. Cox. And just to see how far it has come and the work that they are doing throughout Georgia just lets you know that this is certainly needed. I recall many years ago, a situation of a young lady going out on maternity leave and was given an ultimatum to return to work by a certain day or lose her job. And I just want to say thank God for good friends like Sheriff Modena that intervened at the time. And so this is very well, much needed, and I hope they continue throughout the state of Georgia and get everybody on board with this, because we as men sometimes don't understand what it takes to be a mother, let alone have a child, and be trying, sometimes forced to return to work too soon or too early. So glad to support this, and thank you, and kudos to those that brought it forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Tillman. Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, I just want to say that I support this 110%. I mean, I know what y'all do, what y'all go through. I've seen it, and I'm glad it's way past due. I wish we'd have done it a long time ago. And Ms. Lucas, brother, I'm glad y'all got on board, and y'all really pushed it. Y'all the ones that got behind it and done it, and got, got us behind it. And thank y'all. Thank y'all for doing our job.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance about adopting some federal emergency management flood guidelines, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission amending Section 11-6 and Section 11-30 under Chapter 2, under Chapter 11 of the Macon-Bibb County Code of Ordinances, to provide for the automatic adoption of the most recently available flood elevation data provided by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, to comply with FEMA's requirements for participation in the National Flood Insurance Program and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate, I'm sorry, next is an ordinance to write off some accounts receivable that are deemed uncollectible, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the Director of Finance to write off accounts receivable for the Department of Solid Waste for up to $724,654 as determined and recommended by the Tax Commissioner and/or Director of Solid Waste for fees billed to accounts for solid waste collection and disposal for which no water service was being provided, and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is a resolution to accept a grant for the Mental Health Court, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a State of Georgia Accountability Court Supplemental Grant in the amount of $621 from the Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council that has been awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Mental Health Court, in substantially the same form as attached as Exhibit A and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an appointment to the Development Authority of Macon-Bibb County, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission reappointing Sheila Thurmond to the Development Authority of Macon-Bibb County for an additional term of four years and for other purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is two appointments to the Urban Development Authority, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission reappointing Shannon Fickling and Chris Sheridan to serve as members of the Macon-Bibb County Urban Development Authority and for other purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an appointment, a second appointment to the Development Authority of Macon-Bibb County, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission reappointing Starr Purdue to the Development Authority of Macon-Bibb County for an additional term of four years and for other purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to close a portion of Spring Street, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the closure of a portion of Spring Street for the purpose of expanding and renovating High Street Park and Lanier Park located on both sides of Spring Street, and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to authorize refunding bonds for existing debt, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing Macon-Bibb County to enter into an intergovernmental contract with the Macon-Bibb County Urban Development Authority, and to take such further actions as are necessary for the issuance of approximately $15,555,000 in aggregate principal amount of Macon-Bibb County Urban Development Authority refunding revenue bonds, Series 2, 2017A, and approximately $3,275,000 in aggregate principal amount of Macon-Bibb County Urban Development Authority taxable refunding revenue bonds, Series 2017B, to take such action as may be required for the authority to issue such bonds, to authorize the mayor and other officers and officials of the county to take such further actions that are necessary to provide for the issuance and delivery of the bonds described herein and for other purposes.
The committee as a whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is the, a resolution to approve a financial consultant for Division A of the Macon-Bibb County Pension and Retirement System, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and consent to the selection of Morgan Stanley Greystone Consulting to serve as investment consultant for Division A of the Macon-Bibb County Pension and Retirement System and for other purposes.
The committee as a whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. I'm missing one, Janice, about the seats for the Grand Opera House. Do you happen to have that close by?
Yes, sir, I do.
Good. The final resolution is a resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the purchase of new seats for the Grand Opera House, and I'll add, to be paid for out of bond proceeds, 2017 bond proceeds, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a purchase and sell agreement with JMA Seating LLC for the purchase and installation of chairs for the Grand Opera House, in the amount of $323,526.75 to be paid from 2017 bond proceeds and for other lawful purposes.
Committee as a whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. One no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a new business. There are several items of new business that I'm going to refer to our committees for a further evaluation and study. First is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the State of Georgia Council of Accountability Courts Judges Funding Committee for fiscal year 2018 in the amount of $158,990, requiring local matching funds of $17,666, for a total of $176,656 awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Veterans Court. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Next is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the State of Georgia Council of, Council of Accountability Courts Judges Funding Committee for fiscal year 2018 in the amount of $208,537, requiring local matching funds of $23,171, for a total of $231,708 awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Mental Health Court. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Next is a resolution, Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding accepting a grant from the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, in the amount of $127,702 for the purpose of establishing specialty courts or dockets to address offenders arrested for drug charges or mental health issues. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. That's all of the new business that was ready to be read, but the Attorney's Office will be promulgating additional measures, I'm sure, resolutions and ordinances. So please check the agenda that's published on Friday afternoon, and we'll advise you of those issues, resolutions and ordinances that will come before our committees next Tuesday, the 13th of June, beginning at 9:00 a.m. in the Commission Council Meeting Room right here behind us. 9:00 next Tuesday morning. That brings us now to public comments on non-agenda items. And Ms. Hunt, you, you had one, one that was an agenda item, but I think you wanted to talk to us now about a couple of other non-agenda items. Is that correct? Good. Will you come up and join us? You'll recognize for five minutes, Ms. Hunt.
Um, eat your bowl.
What?
Oh, eat your boos.
No, total, total, total. You're gonna have, you're gonna have to be a little speedy with it.
I'm gonna take five minutes.
All right.
I'm just playing with you. You got to have a little jolly.
Uh-huh, we do, we do, and I appreciate it.
On next Monday, June the 12th, we have lost a lot of people to gun violence and domestic violence. And last year, nationally so, and Macon-Bibb County took suit and declared June as Gun Violence Awareness Month. And we're continuing that same tradition this year. Now, on the 12th, we'll be out front, in front of the government center with Now, on the twelfth, we'll be out front, in front of the Government Center with our memorial service remembering those people that have lost their lives to gun violence and domestic violence. And we inviting you to come and share with us. We asking everyone to wear orange if you can, or bring an orange ribbon or whatever, and we asking you to bring orange balloons to release in the remembrance of loved ones that have been lost to gun violence. Uh, that's our citizens and our police officers. Uh, someone said to me, why are you recognizing the police officers? That's a part of me, too. And when they've lost their lives, that, I grieved. I, I have a, a cousin that was lost, a police officer that was lost to gun violence. So violence affect everybody, and we need to show, we, don't forget those people because they were our loved ones, or they were people that were protecting us, and we, it's gonna be at six PM right out front, and we asking you to be there. Candles will be provided for the candlelight vis- visual, but we asking everyone to bring an orange balloon to release. Also, um, the Rosa Parks Square, uh, we think is just talked about right here, Macon, Georgia, but I've been getting phone calls ever since it, it has started. New York City, New York is in support of us. Nassau County, New York, Syracuse, New York, Brooklyn, New York, Los Angeles, California, San Diego, California, Atlanta, Georgia, Savannah, Georgia, Charleston, South Carolina, Charlotte, North Carolina, Louisville, Kentucky, Nashville, Tennessee, Washington DC, Columbia, South Carolina, these people that have called me and said if they, if we need them to come to rally with us, they will be glad to. We have petitions here that been, have been collected by, uh, members of, a, a member from Beulah Baptist Church, Sister Della Golden, and National Action Network members, and we would like to give these to Ms. Lucas at this time to let her know. And we still have, uh, farms out with signatures being collected. Right now, we have over a thousand signatures, and we are determined to stand behind what we believe. Now, I've been going to the National Mall in Washington DC for a whole lot of different events. You can have a wedding there, and you can have a thousand folk there, but you better not bring no alcohol in there. You better take your alcohol party outside of the mall. When it says no alcohol allowed, it's not allowed anywhere in those parks. And I think if we're gonna have a memorial park, we need to do the same thing. I, I was insulted when the young man said, when we first started talking, they were gonna take the memorials and put them in the cemetery. Then last week, to, uh, add to the insult, they wanna take the memorials up out of the park and put them down in front of the Tugman Museum. You just keep insulting black people on top of insults, and it's time out for that. Now, not only Rosa Parks is over there, but we have Ms. OCB McKay over there, who took and trained young men and young women how to be respectful young men and young women. And, uh, Dr. Ha- uh, Holliday got out wanting to know what Rosa Parks would think. I'm seventy years old, and I was raised by some of Rosa Parks' friends, and in the Sunday School class, they taught the same thing that she taught. Young ladies don't chew gum in the public. Young ladies don't smoke in the public. Young men and young ladies don't drink in the public. If you gonna drink, drink in the privacy of your own home, that's what she taught. And then when the agreement was made for that park to be made, named after her, that was one of the stipulations, that no alcoholic beverages be served there. Now, we got a big ol' sign out at Emerson Park, no alcohol. Not one memorial is sitting out there.
Your time has elapsed.
Thank you. And you just remember what I said. I'm gonna keep talking about it, if I have to buy me some time on WMaz.
Tha- thank you very much, Ms. Hunt. We appreciate you being here. Next, Louis Hargrove. Mr. Hargrove, thank you very much for being here. You recognized for five minutes, sir.
How you doing, ma'am? County Commissioners? Peoples, y'all, y'all? Uh, I, I heard something that, uh, y'all getting some money for mental health, uh...
Go ahead, Mr. Hargrove, I'm sorry.
Get some money for mental health. I'm gonna tell you something, ma'am. Eight out of ten peoples got a mental problem, but you can't separate it from, uh, drug abuse, it's connected. Eight out of ten, believe me. I did that type of work eighteen and a half years, still do it occasionally. Uh, but that ain't the reason I came down here tonight. I've been advocating for y'all to fix that screen for the last year. You know that thing been messed up on the first and the third Tuesday for about a year? It just so happened somebody got it right tonight. One of them ought to be live, that's what I'm saying. It ain't been shown, live, but it's showing tonight, I guess, on Channel fourteen. Okay, uh, I heard Mr. Lockett come down here and was talking about, uh, Mr. Buncher out there in Bellevue, and he do need to be recognized for something. That man was down here crying and going on when we had City Council, and for these overnight advocates sprung up, community advocates, uh, begging for y'all to do something out there in, uh, the Bellevue community, and you still have a recognition, Mr. Buncher. You need to do something for that man, if you have the name Harlem Road, Buncher Road or something. Anyway, a lot of people don't never talk about, we had one black mayor here in the city of Macon, C. Jack Ellis. Nobody tried to recognize that man for anything, anything. And he was a lake two times, two times, eight years. But the power to be froze the money until he got out of office. Then they start spending, turning it out, turning it over. They wasn't spending no money when he was in there, and I think he had borrowed five million, that was two straight times for the budget. But I haven't heard one Commissioner up there recognizing that man for anything. And I don't have a dog in the race, but I'm just talking about right. I believe in right, advocating for the poor economic disinfectant and myself, and people who believe in what's right. But I like been lost my thought when I first got up here. I don't like this story when I'm talking, but that's okay. Uh, Rose Park Square, it just ain't right. You already got alcohol all down time, all down time everywhere. That's why you gonna have more drug abuses, mental health peoples than you know, right here in Macon. And you need to stop giving real bad money. They ain't doing nothing over that money, paying high salary. That's all they doing, believe me. I worked over eighteen and a half years, and they did everything they could to get me up on the bridge, but they can't do it, and they will do it, 'cause I'm a man, and I believe in what's right. And I know this guy here gonna get up there and talk about the Transit Authority. You know people gonna die Alice, one, uh, holiday come? No people have to get their own way to themselves. Their own way. They can't call, can't call a bus for a holiday, and some of them are development disability, disabled, and they really don't have no way. I have took a couple people for a few times myself. But a lot of people watch this program down here 'cause they can't get out, to come down here, and they like to keep up with the commission of what's going on, so they can call each other and talk about it, especially older people. And this thing been messed up quite a while. But ma'am, you say united we stand, divided we fall, and we divided. And I still believe in you, but come together and make us one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate it, Mr. Hargrove, appreciate your patience, appreciate you being here. Uh, next, Mr. Wade Horton does want to talk to us about transportation. Mr. Horton, thank you very much for being here. And you're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, I am here today again to talk about the Transit Authority, and I've been trying to, uh, just throw out a few nuggets every time I come, 'cause I know sometimes you have so much to say to get bogged down. But, um, we're in a government that is, it's a new form government, it's a newly consolidated Macon-Bibb government. Population grew overnight, yet our Transit Authority didn't grow with it, and it's matter of fact, it's regressing, it's, it's growing the other way. We've had times, uh, that they have, uh, cut the hours operation in the mornings and at night, which has caused some people who get up there early to have to go to work or go to school or get off from work, has caused them hardships. Now, I don't fit that category, 'cause I don't be up that time in the morning, and most time I'm, I'm not using the service at night that late, but there are some that do. I was at a recent meeting, um, and they was talking about, even though they've cut, they're still saying they might have to cut some more, also considering raising, um, fees, fares. To me, that's another tax on people who can't afford it. Now, if we were in a sys- had, had a system where it was majority of the time field to capacity, we had over, you know, people standing like they used to stand years ago, I would say, yeah, that's a need to raise, if, you know, it, if it's something that, uh, is very much needed. But every time you raise doesn't mean that that's gonna solve a problem, it's gonna cause more of a problem, because you gonna have even less people riding. Now, some cities, when they, when, when they have, uh, different fees, they have a fee to ride per ride, they have daily rides, weekly rides, and they have monthly rides. Now, we have daily rides, and we have monthly ride. If you, if you purchase a monthly pass at the beginning of the month, you can ride for the whole month, but if you purchase it in the middle of the month, it's only a good fifteen days. We are way behind. We ought to be, you ought to be able to purchase a ticket, a weekly ticket, and, and it tell you from what day of the week it starts, whether it's the beginning of the week or the middle of the week, but we're not at that point. And that the way we are going now, we're going backwards. We need to be expanding into other parts of Be- Macon-Bibb so that people who are going to these industrial parks or who is going to, uh, dialysis centers can make it there, but we're not at that point, and we continue to regress. And I come here so that when you guys meet, uh, with the budget, reference to the Transit Authority, that you can advocate on our behalf. There's a trip, a, a bus that is assigned to Mercer. Mercer pays the Transit Authority money to use that bus, but Mercer advocates for the students, and they do certain services to accommodate the students when they're having different events going on. And some may extend past, uh, the norm operation for the transit. So my urge to you right now is that when it's time for the budget, you say no, no increase in fares, and restore our, uh, system at least back to where it was, 'cause at one time, I was talking about adding Sunday routes, but now I'm trying to just concentrate on restoring it back to the level that it was, and then we'll start talking more about that. We're gonna talk about growth, and we gonna, uh, talk about sustaining our economy and building on it. We need to also look at the transportation and the people who needs it, so, uh, please consider what I'm saying, and when it's time for the budget to be renegotiated, y'all speak up for us and negotiate, hey, we don't want this, we want you to do this. They've told us that, uh, Macon-Bibb don't run down here, we do. Well, maybe y'all don't run down there, but you got some influence. If Mercer can influence and speak on behalf of their students, then you ought to be able to speak and speak on behalf of the citizens of Macon-Bibb County, your constituents, the people that you represent, and in your town halls, you discuss it and find out, well, where's, do, do your constituents have a problem with it? And I bet you'll find out that some do, a lot do, you know? So please, ma'am, please, sir, uh, when you're discussing it, please, uh, don't just give the money without speaking and looking at, out for the people of Macon-Bibb. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. We appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. Uh, final, Patricia Fay Ivy Brown, uh, is hit, addresses Ms. Brown. You're recognized for five minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Patricia Fay Ivy.
Pull, pull that microphone down just a little bit so we can hear you. That's good.
Once again, my name is Patricia Fay Ivy Watkins Brown. This is considered to be the home of the slaves, which also is considered to be the home of the heritage, which is considered to be the end of slavery, which we would join hand in hand, and it's the end of slavery where there's no more depression of anyone standing up for rights. I come down here because rights have been taken away from others to address to them as their members have sit and let stuff went on at work. Hatred start at work, so I come here for the end at work. I am a voting citizen, and I, in other areas of my life where they are trying to take what is rightfully mine, and I want me and my children, as well as all of our relatives, to be able to live a life without hatred, cruelty, greed, so we have respect for one another, and not just you coming to work, doing anything to people to say that you have knowledge, in the end, you want to make people look as they are fooled because you have none. Knowledge mean that you respect others, that you don't go and do anything to anybody to say that you have knowledge, knowing that God will bring out the truth, and His word says, vengeance is mine, saith the Lord. I shall repay every man according to his deed. So you are hanging up, rights never been restored, you have the Jefferson Davis, which you put out, taking all constitutional rights, as well as to confederate, so we will ask that you tear it down and remove it, so you can learn to have respect for others, and stop all this foolishness about hatred, 'cause it's just in honor to greed. Greed means you did anything to people because you did not want to respect not only them, what was theirs. So asking that you would learn to respect people, because the job says, when you look at the right, that you cannot hold people properties. It's in the Constitution that you can't not hold their property, that you cannot disrespect them, that anything about them, that there is no way, and also it says that there is no slavery in the United States of America, but there you have it here, and that's what I come to y'all for. It will be celebrated down at the wall, where it is the rock, where the rock of Moses, where the heritage will be celebrated, which will be the end of slavery, where we will join hand in hand, and it will stop all this hatred, cruelty, and greed, and we will go out for respect toward one another. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Brown. We, we appreciate you being here. We have one point of personal privilege, uh, Commissioner Tillman.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Just always, when we have the opportunity to, uh, uh, send kudos to, out to our Public Affairs under the leadership of Chris Flor, uh, Justin, and Rachel. Uh, for those that don't know, it, tonight was the first night we actually were streaming live on, uh, Facebook, uh, this entire broadcast. live on, uh, Facebook, uh, this entire broadcast, so, uh, thank you, they figured it out, and now we are on our way.
Very good, very good, all right. Uh, Commissioner Lucas, do you, do you have a point of personal privilege?
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, um, I just wanna express, uh, congratulations to, uh, my seatmate over here and sometimes partner in crime, every now and then, um, Rabbi Schlesinger, who officially retired, uh, from the temple, uh, on the first, but, uh, a number of us were at the synagogue on, uh, Sunday e- evening, and, uh, we were a part of a wonderful program in, in honor of his retirement, and I understand he's getting on a motorcycle and going somewhere and doing some stuff. I don't guess he'll tell us when he comes back, but, uh, we wanna express, uh, congratulations to him, and we're just happy that he's continuing his service here in Macon Bibb, um, as a commissioner, and also over at Mercer. So I just wanted to express, uh, my congratulations to him, and...
Good, uh, thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Uh, no other points of personal privilege, we've reached the end of our agenda, can I get a motion to adjourn?
No.
Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.